Okay. All right, so we're gonna call the meeting to order. We'll do the pledge of allegiance first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have any public hearing? Yeah.
Hi, I just wanted to officially ask if there was a way to move a couple of items on the agenda up. So I figured I would just mention that to make sure I did it the right way instead of I had emailed you earlier.
Yep.
So I'm looking to see if we can move the principals' report, specifically the bright update, and old business therapy dogs healing pause. If we could move that up on the agenda, that would be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other public hearing? Okay. All right. We have approval of minutes from January 21st.
I would move that we approve the minutes of January 21st.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
I just have two things to add.
Sure.
To the attendance, can we add Mark Burnett and Jamie Pars? Okay, then that was all I have.
Great. Just for everybody in the audience, it's really important if you haven't already done so to sign in just so that our note taker can accurately reflect that in the minutes. Was that the only one?
Yep, those are the two.
All right, any other discussion? No, not seeing any?
Nope.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on. We have some warrants. I'll make a motion to accept the payroll warrants. 115, 116, 116-1, I think your phone is going off, 117, and 118.
So move.
Any discussion? Yeah, yeah, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion that we take the food service 1, excuse me, 1024, 1026 as a batch.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And elementary 1023, 1025, 1027 as a batch?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to accept secondary 1111, 1112. Sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Yep.
Great. All right, are there any gifts or grants?
No gifts or grants.
Thank you. All right, we have we have a request to move some items up on the on the agenda. I would suggest that we move the the dog therapy right under the bright update, so ahead of the report from the ETA, the PI, the budget and personnel, and the joint school committee. We take that out of old business for just for the purposes of the therapy dog pause discussion and move it up. How do people feel about that?
Fine.
Sure.
Okay. All right, so report of the Gilmanagier representative. I do not see the representative. Okay, did we, I did not notice, did we get a report? I did not see one.
No.
Okay. I'm gonna, that's the same for the tech representative. CES report.
I don't have a report at this time.
Okay.
When we meet next, but.
Regionalization report, I do not have, our rep is not here, does anybody else have anything to add?
No.
Capital planning committee update.
We meet next week on March 5th, and we have, we didn't meet in February, so no updates.
All right, we're up to the superintendent's report.
All righty. So some EES specific updates, updated by Power School data breach.
Ongoing with Power School taking the lead on informing any people who had compromised information. We have filed all complaints with legal agency as advised by Power School and our insurance carrier. The municipality has been informed and a claim has been filed with MIIa. We are beginning the search for the permanent Irving Elementary School principal. The position has been posted and the search committee is in process of being formed. The intention is to have a search committee that represents a wide range of stakeholders that make up the EES family. Director of Students for Amy Langdon will facilitate the search process and serve as a non-voting member. On February 10th, the superintendent and the director of finance join the school committee at a joint boards meeting with the finance committee, capital planning committee, and select board to present the FY 2026 budget and capital planning requests. Union 28 updates, the efficiency advisory group continues to meet to determine ways in which they can leverage our resources and consolidate our practices across the union. They had their last meeting on 2/12, and that is going to be their final meeting as their plan. They're going to present their thoughts to the JSC on March 17th, and unless something happens at that meeting, they, that will be the last meeting of that advisory group. The rollout of the online absence management system frontline is underway across all union schools. Some legislative updates. This will probably be a new item on the superintendent's list as there are frequent legislative updates right now. Recent federal policy changes have introduced several measures that may significantly impact public schools. Based on the continual increase I've received across all union schools from a variety of stakeholders, I will continue to include legislative updates as part of my superintendent's report. These updates are intended to be given in a nonpartisan manner and meant to keep people informed of changes that may impact public schools. In January, MASC, MASs, and the Mass Attorney's General Office began monitoring and issuing updates to schools regarding school and district responses in reference to changes in undocumented student policies. Under federal law, school districts are obligated to provide equal access to education for students regardless of immigration status. I've included for the school committee the most recent guidance from our district, our district council. All principals have been provided with a copy as well. Prior to recent changes, schools were considered kind of like a sanctuary status, and that is no longer the case. Federal funding freeze, on January 27th, the Office of Management and Budget issued a memo directing federal agency to temporarily pause all activities related to the disbursement of federal financial assistance. This led to initial uncertainty around educational funding streams, including school lunch funding, Title I and IDEA. The Department of Education has indicated that these programs would not be impacted by this potential freeze. Currently, the freeze has been rescinded, and current public school funding is unaffected. There is, Massachusetts is part of a class action suit or grievance that was filed on the 31st of January in response to, it's actually called New York versus Department of Ed, but it lists a number of states. And it has tried to get an, a ruling that if Congress has allocated funding, it is not subject to a freeze at the executive branch. No, no progress on, that's just where it stands. State legislative changes, Massachusetts educational funding, the Massachusetts state budget includes 198.9 million to reimburse school districts at 100% for costs incurred when students leave to attend charter schools, 99.4 million for regional school transportation, and 15 million for funding rural aid. Cell phone usage, the Mass Attorney General Campbell introduced the Study Act proposing a bell-to-bell restriction on student access to cell phones and personal electronic devices during school hours to enhance the learning environment. So I'm sure we're gonna hear lots more about how that's gonna play out. And upcoming mass legislative actions, Senator Joe Comiford has filed an act to provide sustainable future for rural schools. Rural schools face many structural challenges, including declining enrollment, stagnating local tax bases, disproportionately high transportation and special education costs, and a state funding formula that favors schools with dense populations and larger enrollments. This bill addresses these and other issues by providing funding for regional schools, school building, construction, renovation, and exceptional transportation and special education costs, supporting shared services among regional schools, and looking for ways to reduce healthcare costs. So that bill will be presented, and we'll look for how that, that could certainly impact the rural schools in the, within the union. And unless I missed something on the news today about a new legislative change, that concludes my report.
I'm curious if we've noticed any cellphone use in Irving.
I will defer to the principal, I would, I wouldn't be surprised, but.
So we have very limited issue with this particular problem. Most of our students understand that once they come into the building, the cell phones are put away. And then they go, they think they pretend to use them on the bus ride to and from school, and that's about it.
All right, any questions?
No.
All right, thank you. All right, director of finance?
So we had a joint meeting, Superintendent Cleveland and I were able to present the draft FY 26 budget and capital planning requests at the joint select board, finance committee, and school committee meeting on February 10th. There were some great questions about the budget and in-depth discussion about the blinds and roof HVAC projects. A major part of the discussion was around the available funding. So we would now like to ask the school committee if they will vote to allow the superintendent to submit the statement of interest to the MSBA. Once we have votes from the school committee and select board, the district will submit the SOI before the March 21st deadline. And there's very specific language about it, I have it printed out. If you'd like to read the vote.
Is that the vote that you included in the report that you gave us?
Um, I don't think so.
I don't think so, okay.
No, but I have copies of everyone, I need an adjustment to one, but with the MSBA, you have to have, you have to read the language verbatim in order to have the vote.
Okay.
It's in the box.
Your first paragraph references two different projects, and you're talking right now only about the roof and.
Yes. Yes, this is for the MSBA statement of interest for our accelerated repair program. There's one part in the middle that I wrote, the priority, priority five, and what the project is. But if you would like to elaborate on it, that is to your discretion.
Get discussions going on, I move that we vote this. That we approve this.
I'd second that. I would second that, and if we have to read the actual wording, we can do that too. For the sake of discussion, I'd second Mark's motion.
Do you need it right out loud?
I guess that's the first question, okay, so.
So we're gonna draw straws for who reads it?
Oh, no, I just thought he was gonna read it with emotion.
I just wanted to read it over myself.
Okay.
Yeah, and then we can have discussion on it to make any changes if we need to.
This says, has voted to authorize, so we haven't actually voted to authorize it, so.
I'm not sure which part you, do we have to read the whole thing, or just we read into it, or we just accept that that is here, as printed?
I didn't, I didn't understand, we had a motion to vote on, do we vote? I thought Mark was moving this.
Yep.
I seconded it, but, but before we do, we have to read the whole thing.
Yes, it's just, it has, has, I'm just commenting on the wording, it's has voted, so, so, so we, we need to do that. That's all I'm saying, it's oddly worded. Is there any more discussion about this, does everybody understand what we're doing? And any other questions or discussion about the statement of interest, SOI is statement of interest?
It's my understanding this doesn't lock us into anything, but if, if we are, if the request, we send the statement of interest, and if we're in a whole bunch of people who are interested, we may be chosen, or may not. But if we don't submit this, we don't even have a chance to get chosen.
We don't get into the consideration.
Right, so once we get into the consideration, if that happens, will perhaps be more votes.
And even then, you're not bound by, there's, there's a process, so you're not, even if you're accepted, and they give you the proposal, and you say, nah, that's not what we're interested in, there's, there's still a lot of steps that allow Irving to not take part, but if we don't do this step, we're excluded from consideration of getting in the pot.
This is the first step in a long process that may or may not be a step.
Yeah, I think when they, when you give a statement of interest, they want to know that you have the full backing of the school committee and from the select board, that this is what we would like to do.
Yep. Okay, so are we feeling ready to make a decision about this, one way or the other? Okay, so. Are we in favor of this?
Yes.
Yeah. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so having convened an open meeting on February 25th, 2025, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the, the school committee of Irving Elementary School, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts Building, School Building Authority, the statement of interest form dated March 2025 for the Irving Elementary School, 28 Northfield Road, Irving, Massachusetts, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority category for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts Building Authorities in the future. Our priority is priority five, capital repair of the HVAC system and the roof. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, and any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority or commits Irving Elementary School to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts Building Authority. So we have voted in favor of this.
Now we're gonna ask for a select board circle, in similar format, and then we'll be able to, to submit our statement of interest. There's a, the actual draft statement of interest is in your packet. And we kind of looked at it at the, the finance committee, select board, school committee meeting last couple weeks ago. And we can move forward. So the FY 26 Irving Elementary and Secondary budget, there have been no changes to either budget since the last meeting where we had a preliminary vote. I accept that I, the numbers are all the same, every line is exactly the same, but in your budget in your packet, I have a recently, on page five, there is a breakdown of the expenses for salaries, temporary salaries, and accounts payable.
I'm sorry, which, which?
Uh, for the budget.
Budget?
Yeah.
Got it. Wait, one second, let me just go. Okay, go ahead now.
So on page five, at the end of all the lines, there's an expense breakdown. It's helpful to the town to, and their budgeting process to have it broken out by salaries, temporary salaries, and accounts payable. And accounts payable does include the union 28 salaries because they get processed on the accounts payable warrants. That's the only change to the budget since you saw last month.
Are you finding it, Caitlin?
Maybe.
It's in, it's in paper form too, if you want to look at it paper. But it's on page five? Yes.
Not on the one that was sent to you earlier, so.
That's why.
I'm sorry.
So this page five.
So. Yep. So the breakdown is 78.16% of the budget is in salaries, 1.12 in temporary salaries, and 20.72 in accounts payable. But besides that addition, there are no other changes to the budget.
And what is the temporary salary?
So, good question, so there's substitutes, and we've got several substitute lines, several substitutes for vacation help, for custodians, general substitutes in the building, substitutes for professional development, special education.
So all of those are kind of lumped into there?
Yep, yep, they're all the temporary salaries. There's still time to go over any questions you may have on the budget for elementary or secondary. And then if you'd like to vote for our final approval, you can do so at this meeting or the next.
I move that we accept the budget that's presented to us here.
One for elementary and one for secondary. You'll need two different votes.
So we needed, all right, for the elementary. Make a motion that we accept the elementary budget.
Second.
Now we can talk about it.
If you could, Mark, if you could just say exactly what the dollar amount is, just so we're clear.
Just a minute, let me go back and look at.
It's on page five.
Yeah.
It's a $3,811,782.
Thank you. Are you still okay, can you second any?
I'll second it, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we have a motion in a second to approve the elementary operating budget for fiscal year '26. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Not seeing any, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Then, secondary. The correct secondary is the $1,361,000, okay, perfect. So I will make a motion to approve Irving Secondary Education fiscal year 2026 budget of $1,361,622.
Second.
Were your questions answered about transportation? Or that conversation? A law has probably happened since then, but that, I just thought of that.
For the purposes of this, yes.
Yeah, okay. I don't have any other questions. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
So two other quick updates. Frontline Absence Management, we have another of our weekly meetings with frontline absence management tomorrow. This will be one of our final meetings before we go live with the software in a few weeks. And Medicaid, Medicaid claiming reports have been submitted, they, we do that, they lump together two quarters at a time, so for quarter one and quarter two of FY '25, those have been submitted. And I don't think we've ever really talked about them at school committee meetings, and probably because the funding goes back to the town, so we submit our reporting, and then the town receives it. But if you're curious of sort of what kinds of funding the town does receive from our Medicaid, I kind of gave you a breakdown of some of the FY '23 and FY '24 amounts that were reimbursed to the town. Because we're a municipal district, it goes back to the town. If we were a regional school district, it would go to the school, but we're a municipality. And I really have to thank, you know, there's, the reporting is pretty intricate, and there's a lot of figures that we have to ask the town for. Jen Wetrupper has been great with providing us information on health insurance and employment, other costs for the employees that are service providers, nurses, and stuff. So they've been really helpful in getting our reporting done. But just a little aspect that we don't normally talk about.
Great. Any questions about that? All right. Moving on.
And then I have all the expenditures for, the recent expenditures for elementary and secondary. If there's any questions on them, I can provide it. I think it's, I think it's helpful for us and full transparency that the school committee members get the full warrants every time and can review. So maybe this is a little more unnecessary at this point, because you can, you can look into any warrant and see any of the invoices, but I want to provide you with the information.
One thing I will request on the warrants is, there was a, a bill that came through that had a receipt with it, and the receipt was folded when it was photocopied.
Okay.
So we only saw
Okay.
the very tip of the receipt. So in, in future, if we could just make sure to unfold the receipt so we can see the entire thing.
Sure, thank you. And that's all I have.
Is this a point I should make, just make a mention of my concern that I expressed to you?
Oh, um, no, we're gonna handle that a different way.
Okay.
But thank you. Okay, you're all set, right?
Yep.
Yep, okay, all right, you're up, principal's report.
Okay, thank you. So sticking with our format, I have my four talking points. Covering enrollment, school council, we this month have added from the bright classroom, and our community update. So our enrollment has stayed the same at this time, we are at 112 students. There's been no change in enrollment since January. We had a, our school committee, excuse me, our school council meeting, and spent, the decision of the school council was to continue to dig into the handbook. the decision of the school council was to continue to dig into the handbook. They felt that that was the priority. We are able to get most of the way through it and we have another meeting next Monday so we can finish that. We also have a raft of all of the pertinent information that they are commenting on regarding a school improvement plan. And we are hoping to get that, um, discussed, but possibly not completed. Depends on how much they want to, um, dig into that next week as well. So that is our goal at this time. Um, they are, indications are that the school handbook is the priority at this time because they feel as though parents need to have a clearer understanding. And so we've done, we've done that. So we hope to have a, um, completed handbook by the end of, on the meeting on March third, as well as some work on our school improvement plan. We'll have another meeting in April to finish that if we don't complete the whole thing. And then we'll get, get that, we'll definitely be getting the handbook to you though by March.
Could I ask, um,
Yes.
a question about the, the school improvement plan?
Yes.
Could you flesh out for us a little more? What do you mean to improve? Like, are we gonna?
The school improvement. That's a great question, yes. Um, the school improvement plan is an opportunity for us to look at the, the data that we get regarding student growth and also the lived experience that families have within our school. And so when the members of the school council sit down and make proposals, they're both looking at information that we are gathering from teachers and from our state testing around how our students are performing. And they're potentially going out and talking to members of the community themselves around the lived experience that they have, the types of events that we have here, um, the things that they wish they got, they had more access to. And then what they do is they give us a direction, um, and some timelines and things that they would like to see happen. I bring that same document to the teaching staff for them to also add comments on. It goes back to the school council for a vote so that they can finalize the document and then I would present it here. Traditionally, it's something that's done through the course of the fall. Unfortunately, I was not here in the fall, so we're sort of getting it up and running. And then in January, I made, when this committee started fully, um, I made the decision to allow the members of the committee to make the selection of what our priority was. And, um, there was a very clear parent voice around needing a handbook. So we started with that.
Sort of segues in with something I wanted to mention, I think, if you don't mind taking a minute. I'm concerned that in life, if you don't fully understand the question, the likelihood of getting the right answer is pretty slim. And I don't fully understand the question, I may, may never, but I'm asking if this committee can participate in, in ways that keeps us in our lane as a school committee. We don't try to interfere with the superintendent, the principal, the teachers or anybody else. But if we have a, a base, and, and numbers are not, they're kind of wishy, wishy-washy sometimes, they're not concrete. But I'm recently informed of the, the Department of El- Elementary and Secondary Education and they have numbers and we're X percentile in math or science or whatever it is. So, so if, if, if you're able to give us what, what, this is what I'm requesting, if you're able to give us what you believe is a reasonable evaluation of what these numbers are, because some of them fit, some don't, and they're skewed by people who don't take the test and who knows what else, you know better than I. So if we get a starting point of where at fifty or seventy or whatever the percentage is, and, and taking, I believe we all have a common goal, whether it's administrators, teachers, parents, committee, of improving our kids going from grade to grade or when they leave Irving Elementary, we kind of have a common goal, I think. We do. And so if we know where we are, if we're able to track, are we getting better or how, how can we get better? And how can we as a school committee, again, stay in our lane, not turn and tell anybody what to do, but are, if you, if you think of ways, how can we help better, uh, improve our students as they go along? And I'm just hoping that that's built into the improvement plan sort of somehow.
So actually, yes, the documents that were given to the members of the council do include all of our report card that we get from the Department of Education, as well as data that we had from the fall and the mid-year of student performance. And so they were given all of this and they're being given an opportunity to read through it and go over that. Um, and they're going to be basing their recommendations off of that. And we actually will include our school report card as a part of the school improvement plan and each year, so that would be included and that would allow us to have a baseline as well as to show what we want to see as growth. Um, I can, regardless of whether the school improvement plan is completed by the school council before the next meeting, I can provide you with all of that data so that you can at least see how much progress we've made in it.
Okay, I, I appreciate it very much.
Sure.
It's, uh, I'm coming at it from a number of angles.
Yep.
One is, is there a way that we can be of more help to improve the students and their progress? Uh, the other thing is people watching these, I keep saying there's thousands of people watching, I wish there were, uh, parents, many parents watch, and it'd be nice that they're aware that we're, we're trying to track this the best we can.
Yep.
You're tracking the best you can. So that when they say, how come we're paying this much per student, somebody else is paying that much per student, here's the results we're getting, we can say, well, here's what we're getting and there's this and this improvement. Hopefully. So it'll be a win-win all around, I hope.
I agree.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll have that included in our March report.
Thank you. Thanks.
And going forward, Shannon, could we, um, make the school improvement plan a priority for our October school committee meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I think, so to, to dovetail a little bit on what, um, to build on what Beth said. So just to give you some background, Dan, um, school improvement plans are presented, school committee can't take part in the school council, right? Because that's not your lane, so to speak. However, that plan is supposed to be the guiding document about, here's where we were at the end of last school year and based on that data, and it's not just student academic performance, it can be a variety of things. It can be attendance, it can be discipline reports, I mean, it can be a variety of data points. And the school council says this is, you know, led by the principal, um, going to be our plan and sort of like our roadmap for the next year to improve those outcomes. They present that to the school committee. It really is supposed to be done, to Mackenzie's point, and, and to Beth, as she acknowledged, it's supposed to be done and presented because it's supposed to be an ongoing committee that is continually working. What has happened here is because we have had a series of turnover and interims and all of that, that ongoing work wasn't done. And so the sort of like this pit of stuff to have to dig through to get to that point. So, um, that will certainly be the intent because we will have now a regularly established council that is meeting, that will have already started the data and it will be a starting point for that group so that they can be presented at, it really should be presented at the October, um, uh, school meet, uh, school committee meeting. And through no fault of Beth's or anyone, it's just not how it's been, but.
Whatever the process is,
Sure.
it's never my intention to interfere.
No, 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 just, just giving you some background about what that looks like.
The nice thing is because we're doing this, this work now and really setting a foundation for it, when the new report card comes out in September, we're not going to be starting over in creating something. We're going to be looking at the comparison between the previous report card and the goals that the committee has established and what the new report card is telling us and what tweaks need to happen. So we would be able to get it up and operational much faster and it would be available for the October meeting.
Thank you.
Sure. So my third item is our Irving Elementary School Committee for the Bright Classroom. So this is our update that was requested. Um, just a quick reminder, Bright is what we kind of, we refer to as core plus more and more. Um, it directly supports a small number of our highest need students and it is a comprehensive clinically informed and individualized support. So we have students in tier one, it's about eighty percent of our school. Those are students who have general assembly support, they have whole school mental health, SEL, they have universal screenings, that happens for everyone. And within that, there are about fifteen to twenty percent of students who need additional support, that's our tier two. Um, those are children who get individual or group counseling. They might get other supports. And then tier three is a very small percentage, it's usually no more than about five percent of a total building. And those are children who really get very intensive support. So we look at social, academic and emotional behavior at risk. And the overall score, we had about four students. So we had eighty students who had low risk, we had sixteen students who had some risk and four students who were considered high risk. This appears to have been cut off accidentally, I apologize. Um, so there have been some really positive outcomes of the program. We have had more time on learning in our general education classrooms because we've had a dramatic reduction in the evacuation of general education settings. So the students who are getting intensive support are not in the classroom causing the evacuation disruptions hap, to happen. And so our on learn, on-time learning for those classrooms has gone up dramatically. Um, it also is an increase about positive feelings in school because both the children who are in the general education classroom and are able to express their feelings of safety in their own classroom, as well as the students who are getting the academic support in Bright and are feeling as though they have point people within the building who generally are there for their needs. Um, Elizabeth and Leanne are tremendous assets to Irving Elementary School and the way they have built relationships with the children that they serve has been something that I find to be just really a tremendously important piece of this process. So I'm very excited about that. Um, it also provides supports for families and access to outside resources. And so we're providing that opportunity for families to see what exactly is available to them, making sure that they have phone numbers and resources for that. Um, and it also gives us an opportunity to partner with local police and our local co-responder to provide the types of intensive interventions that might be necessary for a child who is in crisis. And the added benefit is that we have increased attendance because these are students who might otherwise have been out of school for time, but they are physically coming each day. So the co-responder, because I know that has been a piece that people have had questions about, is select towns, Irving is one of them, have access to a clinical support options co-responder. And this is a person who comes when a student is experiencing crisis and needs an intervention. Um, it is an alternative to calling an ambulance or calling the crisis response team. So it's someone, it's a trained mental health professional who can come and be an alternative resource at a time when we are in a heightened state of need. Because the program exists, we are able to build a collaborative relationship with this co-responder and this person who can come out and from time to time use the resources and the information they've gathered on previous visits to be able to respond to the needs of the children that they're continuing to serve.
Is that a co-responder only available because of the Bright program or would that be available to us no matter what?
No, it would be available to us no matter what. Um, it is a town resource that we have access to.
Thank you.
And one thing to note, they have to, part of that grant is they have to be accompanied to the school by a local law enforcement.
Correct.
Yes, thank you.
So, so it's not necessarily, um, the police responding, but that they're responding with the, um, mental health professional because that, that is part of the, um.
And that's an additional service that is offered in Irving no matter.
Because they could be responding to a mental health crisis anywhere within the community and that's for their protection. And so that is part of the model.
Okay.
So they respond and they may not be involved at all in the response, but they do come on campus with the co-responder because that's a requirement of the program. Does that make sense?
Grant program through the police.
Right, not right, nothing to do with Bright.
Okay.
Now, this, that program is available to anybody in the community.
Yes.
Yeah, that co-responder.
Yep.
Yeah, the wording just almost made it seem like it was possible because of the Bright program, so I just wanted to clarify that they're separate.
Understood.
Perfect.
So at this time, we have five students with additional classroom support. Um, this is a fluidity around to Bright. I, I will say that we are going to be speaking, speaking in generalities, this is a, a very small, um, school and I want to make sure that I am protecting the confidentiality of the students. Um, so there are additional supports for students who are outside of the Bright program and those are additional five students. And so we have, we're working with ten students at this time. Um, these are opportunities for us to provide interventions and supports for children who are full-time within the classroom but still need more mental health support than they might otherwise in other, another child within this building. Um, the real advantage of this program comes in line three. So in the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, there were one hundred and sixty calls for, for the response team. Um, that, those were classroom teachers and resource teachers and special education teachers. They were, it was a trained group of staff who were called out from their resource, from their positions, their jobs, to respond to a student in need. During this school year, at this time, we have had a total of six calls for a response team and all six of those calls occurred in September and October. So we have had a dramatic response additionally, a dramatic drop in responses additionally, and this is the part that I find to be most beneficial, is that we are no longer using classroom teachers as a part of a response team. So there are no classrooms where the class learning is stopping so that a teacher can be called out to go and respond in a different room for a child in need. We have shifted our model so that there was people who are, in these six cases who were supporting are people who are not in direct classroom instructional teachers. And so now we're not interrupting learning anymore. You have a question?
Is there any, um, reason you're able to share with us why it's such a dramatic, it's great that's such a dramatic drop from a hundred and sixty to six. I know it's a shorter period of time, but.
So, the reality is, is that those, those calls are you, are most exclusively for a select number of students with repetitive intervention. And so now that those students are receiving daily support and intervention from Elizabeth and Leanne in this setting, they're just not experiencing the need for those call-outs anymore. We've got a whole new model. Um, I will go down to classrooms and I will provide support, they are in there to provide support to these students. And we have a, a calm down resource room where, you know, the students can go and I, we have one child who really loves a heated blanket. And will, will sit under a heated blanket until they've had an opportunity to, to re-regulate. Personally, I, I think a heated blanket's a great idea. I wouldn't mind one myself most days. But, but that is, the, the really, the restructuring of how we're providing supports to these students from the onset is really what's helping.
I'm assuming enrollment can impact that as well. So if there were changes in student enrollment of who is in attendance at the school last year to this year, those could just be changes that affect that. There's all different reasons, but those are kind of some of those.
So this, it, this program does rely on daily communication with families, calls, dojos, meetings with families on a regular basis. Um, that homeschool connection is essential to supporting our students. Um, the attendance, we cannot currently share that with you because again, it's a very small program. Um, but what I will say is that students are in school daily as opposed to being out of school while we're finding opportunities to support them in their structure of their day. And then the last piece is that we have, we do use a capacity indicator tool and that's how we select students for the program. Um, it allows us to assess the level of need of specific students and to determine how much time they might need support from Bright.
And is that different from the Sabers?
No.
Is that the Saber, do you use the Sabers?
There's two, so Sabers is part of it, but, um, the.
Elizabeth, come on up to the microphones.
So the Sabers is something we look at and there's, um, the capacity indicator that's specific to Bright that has their standards and tiered ways, how we decide, is this a heavy need, is this a medium need, is it a low need? Um, so they're, they are two different things. They're similar, but they are different.
Okay, makes sense, thank you.
Before I move on to the last component, I do want to leave that at Bright. I don't want to leave Bright because people have had a chance to ask questions.
So, so, um, I'm curious, um, part of this Bright program was having, um, you know, Bright give us supports and things, so. So, how is that going? Can you speak to the company itself, the program itself, as far as coming in and...
So, they meet with us twice a month, and I have administrative meetings with them as well. It's with Amy Langdon, and so they provide resources. They also provide professional development. We had a phenomenal speaker came in on one of our Wednesday half-days and did professional learning regarding supporting students who are in crisis and the relationship-building process. I was really very impressed with the quality, and we had about twenty members of our staff that participated in that PD. Not all members of the staff were really appropriate for it, but we wanted to make sure that anyone within the staff that wanted to have access to it did. And so, that was a really wonderful thing. Oh, there's been some financial component as well, that they provide us with some, some money for resources.
They've been pretty responsive from an admin lens. And I'm not the one directly involved, but I know Amy has met, and they've been pretty responsive when we've had questions, both here and we have this program also is at Swift River. And they've been pretty responsive to, you know, we're struggling with this. Is this the right way to set up this component of the program? And they've been very present.
It, when it was previously presented to us, they said for FY25, we were getting like twenty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars. For FY26, it was going to be twenty-three thousand nine hundred dollars. And for FY27, it would be nineteen thousand two hundred dollars. Where is that allocated within the budget so that we can like see that changing?
I don't have those figures exactly, but I have twelve thousand dollars towards the adjustment counselor. That would be, would fold into the operating budget after, I think, going into next year and then thereafter. And then, some of the fringe benefits. And then, materials and supplies, professional development, a stipend. I have those budgeted into FY25. And it gets a little reduced for FY26. And I'm, I don't know what the funding is like for FY27. But I think a lot of it was supplies and PD to get the program started, that then they sort of give us that, and then they kind of release some of the funding as the professional development supply has been purchased.
Okay.
So, you said, you said the twelve thousand dollars was added to the operating budget?
That, the twelve thousand dollars actually is in for funding through Bright. It's for FY25 and FY26. For FY27, I don't think that that twelve thousand dollars is included. That would be folded into the operating budget.
Where is the twelve thousand dollars, though? Like, I don't see it as a, as a line. I don't see it as, as where the grants are usually listed. Point out where that money is. And then, what? Was that line reduced by twelve thousand dollars to offset the, the fact that twelve thousand dollars came from Bright?
Yes, so for the budget for this year and for FY26, the line item for therapeutic services only includes the amount that we're spending out of the operating budget. The twelve thousand dollars is grant-funded. So, I mean, I could list it in the second, the grant budget, if you'd like to see it there, because it's twelve thousand dollars from Bright.
I mean, I feel like it should be included somewhere to, to account for it.
And in the original presentation, it said staffing was fourteen-four. So, I don't know, like, have things been changed or...
So, that was the staffing that includes the fringe benefits of twenty-four hundred dollars.
Okay. And that is, I mean, from last year's presentation. It's saying that's the one consistency from each year. So, that should be seen all three years.
That, yeah, so that is the same. The only reductions I'm seeing are in the materials and supplies that kind of got the program started. PD remains at a thousand, stipend is also, but that had a thousand to begin with, but it's removed for FY26. And I don't think the grant continues into FY27.
Okay. On the one that we were given, it said FY27. Oh, it says local next to it, so maybe that was what the assumption was, that we would then take over afterwards? Okay. So, FY26 will be the last that it was a grant. Okay. So, then, just to kind of piggyback off of those questions, and it doesn't have to be answered tonight, but just thinking about this then will be a financial responsibility? And is the program itself something, not the classroom, the relationship with this company, something that we want to continue and/or need to continue to be able to provide the same services and supports that we are currently providing to those students in that classroom? Because I think that was part of that conversation when we originally got into it, was if we start this up, you know, is it something we then can uphold on our own? Or do we still feel like we need support? Like I said, no answer tonight, but just something to think about as we're going into budgeting, because this will be that conversation for next year. And, trying to pull my thoughts together, sorry. Yeah, that, and then, last year when we were having this conversation, part of the conversation was responsibilities broken down by staff. And it sounds like it's changed a little. So, just to understand the current staff that are in that classroom right now, it sounds like there are two. Okay. And one, it, one has...
So, we have a teacher in the room and a classroom teacher, a general education teacher.
Yep.
We have a counselor who's not exclusive to that program, also provides services for other students within the building. And then, we have a paraprofessional who spends time in that classroom as well.
Okay.
So, Caitlin, just going back to the financial part of it, I would like to see somewhere in the budget that it's accounted for.
I can add it to page six, so where you see the other grants. I'll list in Bright and have those other pieces.
Yeah, I mean, it's not even listed in the, you said therapeutic line is where it would be pulled from? I mean, where it would be, where that money would be allocated to?
So, the therapeutic services line just covers what the operating budget does. So, that covers the, the rest of the salary from the adjustment counselor. But that line is alleviated a little bit by having a little bit of a twelve thousand dollars grant funded.
Right, so, I mean, I, I, because you, you noted that, you know, partial salary moved to a new program, I would have expected if, if Bright was paying for some, some portion of that, that it would be included in there and kind of an explanation. But again, that, that's, then, then just makes me wonder even more. So, why, you know, why that line is still so big? If another twelve thousand dollars is not accounted for in that line, that, you know, that's an increase of thirty-four thousand dollars in that line, if we add that twelve thousand back in, so...
So, the school committee voted, I think, last spring to increase the OT from a point-six to a point-eight. That's why that line has a more significant increase than other lines.
Yeah, but that's one, I mean, that's thirty-four thousand dollars wouldn't be an increase of a day.
But it's also all of the estimated COLAs and step increases for the rest of the salaries in that line.
Okay, so if you could note that on our budgets going forward, so we can see where that is.
I can do that.
And account for it.
Staffing, with the paraprofessional, just looking at like the makeup of costs of the classroom, is that a paraprofessional that is for, like, assigned to that classroom? Or is that paraprofessional assigned to a child?
No, it is not a child, it's not assigned to a child.
Okay.
It's, and actually, that paraprofessional, although there most often, does get pulled and provides support in other locations as well.
Okay, perfect.
It was an existing paraprofessional within the building.
Okay.
So, are there times in the day where there is no student in the room?
At this time, that is not the case. There are varying schedules for the students who access that room. But at this time, there is not a point where no student is there.
Any other questions around Bright before she moves on to the next piece?
Did you skip page four?
Nope.
On that next piece, she's going to connect.
Go back to it.
So, and the last aspect of my four pieces is community outreach. It's something that I'm very excited about and committed to. So, we do have our deadline for preschool enrollment. It is March third. We have been doing continual outreach, phone calls, mailing out packets, offering tours, and just giving everyone a chance to get to know all the opportunities that are had within our preschool program. I will have an update for you in March after enrollment has happened. The Greenfield Garden Club, I'd like to congratulate Steve, who is in the back. He had, in the Stars program, had been awarded the Greenfield Garden Club's mini-grant for an indoor hydroponics project. They, we have not yet received it, which is probably why it's not yet on the, it just came in actually over vacation. So, it's when we get the actual grant money, not just the notification of awarding, we will get that to you for, for your acceptance. But the hydroponics project is going to allow them to purchase the hydroponics growing system to grow herbs and vegetables indoors all year long, and then to be able to give those, you know, students an opportunity to share what they are growing with our larger school.
When it mentions Stars, is that the other?
Yes, it is.
Classroom.
That was my question.
We have a lot of acronyms.
We do.
Pretty sure, but I don't remember.
Shannon, can you look into crafting or, or finding some language around preschool being, having students enroll in preschool without it being a school choice situation? Since preschool is not mandated, if we can enroll without tying into the requirements of school choice?
I just want to clarify, so you're looking at if you enroll students from outside of Irving in preschool, that you're not obligated to keep them for kindergarten?
Correct.
Unless you chose to.
Exactly.
Yep. I can find language around that. We have been looking at the preschool numbers. Gillian Bodine has been very, she's on top of, so that we can anticipate enrollment. We are going to face a situation, there are very few three-year-olds and four-year-olds in Irving, but we have nineteen two-year-olds.
Seventeen.
And seventeen one-year-olds. So, there's this gap of, and when I say few, I think the latest number was there were three four-year-olds.
Yeah, I mean, enrollment right here, pre-K three, there's two students, so...
And there's one addition.
But we're not, we're talking just even through the census, not just who's here. So, one of the things that is interesting, and it will be something we have to talk about as we look at that language, what that looks like. But of the community play groups that happen throughout the union that Gillian facilitates, Irving is the largest play group. It has been the largest when they've been here and when they've been at the library. But not one child is from Irving. But they're coming here for the play group. And she said that it's her, it's her largest play group of all the schools, but none of the students are from Irving.
A cool place to be.
Yeah, there you go.
It's on the weekend when it's here, so.
Yeah, so...
But that is why I'm asking.
If we look at that, we may, there may be children who are already familiar with this, this school and the community.
Part of that too, hearing you say, one, you know, we get to a point where then it jumps. If a child...
Is enrolled as a three, and then when they're a four, our threes, we have nineteen of them? Like, do we have to keep that?
And that's exactly what I'm asking.
You know what I mean? So, but, but keep them even enrolled in preschool? Like, can we say this is a one-year?
Right, but that, and that will be when we have that discussion, keeping in mind if you get rid of them, and I don't mean it to sound so crass, but if you don't keep them as four-year-olds, when they, you are looking at a class of kindergarten with three students. And that's not a reasonable cohort for, for that. So, we might have to think of other things. But I, I think the first step is to find that language around what that looks like. And so, I will do that and bring it to the next, I'll add it to my superintendent's report at the next.
And then, with that, looking at our, our tuition and having it a two-tier tuition, both in resident and non-resident.
And do you know if the same rules apply? That if we accept them, if we were to open school choice as kindergarten, that they have to stay with us through sixth grade?
Unless they choose to leave.
Okay, so kindergarten is that the point?
Kindergarten is when it starts.
Kindergarten's where it kicks in.
Because I know it's not, still not required, so I just want, didn't know.
We get, we are eligible to get school choice funding for them, so that's really the benchmark.
Which also, can you, I think you just mentioned preschool enrollment, right? Yeah, so kindergarten enrollment, is that also happening now?
Yes, we have been reaching out. We have nine current students, four-year-old students who will be coming into kindergarten. We also have an additional student that we are already aware of that will be joining us for kindergarten. And we have two additional students beyond that who we've sent out packets to.
Do you have a deadline?
We do, we're using the March third deadline. But to be fair, we're going to continue to recruit anyone living in town through the course of the spring.
Well, it's gonna...
So, we're trying to get people to commit now. But the reality is, is that we would, anyone living in town, we would want to try to work to build that relationship so that we would know that they could be here with us.
Sure, but when we talk about school choice seats, we would need to know...
Yes, no, I understood that part.
...that data so that we can have that conversation.
Agreed.
Any other questions? Okay.
So, the, the last aspect is, do you want to talk about, you mean, talk about the dog? Or do you, are you going to talk about that?
I'm sorry, one more time, what?
The, the dog?
Yes, I was just about to say, so we've, we've agreed to move that up on the agenda, so that will be coming right, right now. So, on our agenda, under old business therapy dog, healing pause, discussion of multiple vote, we agreed earlier tonight to move that up to right now.
So, I was tasked with getting some informations to, to bring to the committee. So, I reached out to the superintendent's group and about, forgot the exact number I cited early. I think it's about sixty-seven or sixty-eight percent of districts that responded do have some sort of comfort program, and it ranged, but they do have some program. All, they shared their, their policies. MASCE does not have a policy. Their policies are all very similar in the fact that, a commonality I saw was that it is always at the schedule and the continuation of the program is at the principal or building administrator's discretion. So, that was pretty consistent among all of them. I compiled a bunch of them, so if we move forward, we have something to start with. I did ask Adam, who with great humor said, "I'm an attorney. I'm never going to tell you, you bring in anybody." However, he did acknowledge that several of his districts, and I knew from my responses, do have comfort dogs. He would certainly vet, if we decided to move in that direction, he would vet a policy. But he was very clear, as an attorney, he would not endorse that in somebody's home. He, I mean, he had great humor about it, but he said, "I'm an attorney, and I'm not going to ever say that, but I have many districts who do. If we chose to do that, we could look at, you know." We could use him, obviously, to, to vet any policy. So, those were the things I was tasked with bringing to the table. I will say, when I reached out to the superintendent group, they, they were very quick to share their policies, and it was very, overall, pretty positive. But many acknowledged that they're not at the building, at the building level either. But, you know, sort of the rule is, if you're the superintendent, no news is good news. And so, there had not, none, none cited significant issues, though they all did say that the owner carries the insurance. In no way does the school... In no way does the school, and none of the people who responded said that the school carried the insurance.
And were you able to collect, like, the roles or titles that those staff have within those buildings that hold the responsibility of the dog, or however you wanna?
They didn't, I, they did not share that. They said that it was not classroom teachers, though, typically. But I did not break down to, it was a school, a school, school-based role, not unique to one classroom. And I think that was all I was asked to bring to the table. That's all I brought, so I hope that was it.
Could I ask if, if there is a next step, what might it be? I've, I've yet to hear any downside to this, but I'm not sure of the process.
I think the unknown, right? The unknown is always a little nerve-wracking. I would say if you are going to move forward, you would probably start with reviewing the policies of other districts and coming up with your own policy that establishes, and you know, some of the common things that I've seen in those other ones that, you know, the schedule and the effectiveness is the discretion of the principal. None, none of the policies that I saw listed specific schedules for the, the dog. But I would think you would start probably with the go-ahead and then develop the, the policy for Irving. That would be my recommendation, but it is, it is a committee decision. But that would be my recommendation, is that you start with some sort of, of policy development. And there's a lot to go by, and they're all very similar, so somewhere they got a template, because they're all very, very similar.
I'm generally supportive of this, and no need for us to reinvent the wheel. If their policies are working all over the place, and we can just paste together what others have done, seems like a relatively simple approach. If, if we need a motion to move forward with developing a policy, I would move that we do that. Other than that, we do nothing.
With the committees, i- if you choose to go that way, I'm happy to create a draft based on those policies and vet it through Adam, because I think if we bring it and try to develop it ourselves, much better to go through an attorney who, who will be looking at that, and we could follow it just as we would any other policy. I do think that, you know, I know Elizabeth's looking for some sort of direction about should she pursue this or not, so that will, will be up to this committee to decide. But I think, you know, we could expediate it in that way, as far as I could draft something, share it with policy, and then have Adam, Adam take a look at it, if that's the direction that you choose to go.
And it, oh, I just, no, I just wanted to say, like, I keep hearing at the principal's discretion, principal's discretion, and I know that we're going through, like, a permanent principal search right now, and so I just, that's what kind of keeps going in my head, too, of like, is it appropriate to see what that process looks like and ends up being? And that way, when we're all together on, we can all be on the same page, or all have, you know, yes, this is exactly, you know, how they're feeling as well.
Well, I think you're gonna create a policy, because principals come and go, right?
Right, no, I know, and just last meeting, it was, "Oh, how do you feel? How do you feel?" And, and that's great, and, and I don't know what, you know, that search and everything is gonna look like and what's next, but just knowing that there is still a lot of transition to be had at the school, that's kind of just my concern about.
Yeah, and, and I understand. I would suggest that you decide what do you see as for Irving? Because once you approve, the timeline can be adjusted, but the, the leadership here could come and go. And so, I think that you, my recommendation would be you, you make a decision as a body that, yes, we're okay with this at Irving, or we're not, because I don't think you can tie it to a principal, because they change when you don't even expect them to change, and so.
But I, I would say that having a policy is a step of its own, and that, you know, we should go ahead and get a policy and start the process of having a policy. And that's one timeline, and, you know, regardless of whatever happens in the long run, you know, we would have the policy in there.
Right, because like, like you said, I think the policy's gonna help us determine, too, if, is it something that will work at Irving, or won't work at Irving, or have more, you know, say in what it would look like at Irving, I guess.
Well, I would, I would think the policy is sort of, it would end up one of the many policies that the different school districts have put together, but it would be one that we would, again, personalize, like, we try and do. The second question I have is, what is the timeline for actually having a dog? Because I don't underst, you know, I wanna, and I think this is addressed to you, you know, how far out is it between a decision to go forward and walking a dog in the door? Assuming everything is approved, what's the timeline for training, for, and so on?
Yeah, I'm gonna speak.
That's a question to you.
So, the timeline, basically, Boone Field Farms has said, pretty much at any time, there will be dogs available. That's the best answer that I think I can give you. I'm ready to, to have a dog, welcome a dog into school and into my home life. I, I think really the, the question is, do you see this program as a benefit to the students of Irving, or not? I, I think, I, I mean, I, it's, that's where, really where I think your, your question lies. All of the nuances, the ins and outs of all these things, they, they work themselves out. And it isn't, it sounds, you know, we have these policies available to go off of, and we're just, so, just sort of giving me a green light, so I can proceed. You know, I'm not walking in the door tomorrow with the dog, but I would anticipate maybe a few months. Maybe it's the end of the school year, maybe it's the beginning in September. I don't know for sure, because I'm on hold with Boone Field Farms until we're gonna go forward with this.
Yeah, well, it seems to me, from people I've talked to and experiences I've had in the past, that, you know, there's a certain amount of training that has to go on. There's a selection of a dog, and then a training, first with you, and then with the situation that they would be getting into. And so, there is some kind of a timeline, and like you say, it could be the end of school year, it could be, you know, six weeks, it could be beginning of, I don't know. And that, that is one thing I would like to know. In terms of approval, I'm, I mean, each of us can speak for themselves, but from what my experience has been, it seems like a very wonderful idea and a, and, yeah, and I, and, and something I'd like to see us move forward on. And it'd be another tool in the toolbox of support for our students. It looks to me like a policy's gotta be in place first, and we can expedite that. I mean, if, you know, we don't have to take, what is it? I don't know, four months to go through a policy from when it comes into us to all the way? We've expedited a policy in, you know, in, in, in just, I don't know, two school committee meetings, I think. So, that doesn't have to be drawn out. One of the things you said, Shannon, that is something that would need, I would like to hear is, you said that the, in all of the situations, the dog was not assigned to a classroom teacher.
In the situations where they were very specific?
Yeah, now, it could be that there are some where it is assigned that we just didn't hear about.
Could be.
In fact, the one experience, one of the experiences that I'm familiar with, it was a classroom teacher. And that was in a special ed school. So, all of the kids in school were bright students. But, so I'd like that resolved, and I would assume Beth, you would have something to say, and then when we transition to the new principal, it would, it'd be there, that question would be resolved. I want to see it moved forward. I think it's a wonderful idea. And so, like, let's get each piece individually moving forward as, as we can. So, did we have a motion on the floor?
Yeah, I, I tried to move that we authorize and request the superintendent to.
Make the policy?
Draft policy, with the vetted with the attorney.
Okay, so that, if we need a motion for that, I second that. So, do we need a separate motion? Do we need that motion as a separate standalone motion?
I, I think.
Chair, Jefferson?
I'm sorry.
And, and then what? Look, finish your sentence, so I know what you're next trying to say.
Oh, the policy, making up a policy for having a comfort dog in the school. Making up a policy, do we need to separate that from?
From?
From having the dog?
From making the motion to have the, to accept the?
Yeah, to move forward on having the dog. I, I think we, we can get that policy and just start that process, so. And if there are further questions, we can have them second.
I mean, I feel like, and I'm, I'm trying, really had to be thoughtful of the fact that you're saying that you're kind of hanging, hanging out there and, and that we need to have the policy pretty well done, if not done, before we move forward with a vote to have the dog, because we don't want the timeline to not work, so.
I don't think so. I think we can have a policy in place, or we can start getting a policy, whether or not we have a dog. I mean, there's a policy there, you know?
Just skimming the policy folder that I had created on here, it looks like within the policies that I just looked at, that there is a procedure for, so we have this policy that says, yes, we don't prohibit it.
Right.
But here's the process. You make a request to, so you could start on the policy, and that would establish what it, what is the next step. Does that make sense?
And so, then that would be giving essentially the green light, we're gonna, we support this, and we're gonna be working on this policy. Create?
No.
No.
No, okay.
This would just be the policy. I mean, just, just get the policy going, that's my idea.
I mean, in, in the back of my head, I, as I said, I am very much in favor of it. I don't know if everybody else is. I don't know if you're gonna disappear and fly off to Mars tomorrow and not be here, and, you know, we have to wait two years before the next person shows up and wants to have a current comfort dog. But we'd have a policy in place, okay? I mean, we have a policy for duh, for pets in the school, I believe, but it's not for comfort dogs. So, I would like to make, you have made the motion that we have a policy.
Yeah, I, I have, and I, I think.
Now, that's, I second it.
And having, having a policy in place is a question, having the policy in place, we can vote later, do you want to have, move forward with the, with the dog and the whole program? But I, I'm supportive of it. It wouldn't bother me. Other places have acceptable policies, and I'm certain we can come to agreement on acceptable policy. I'll speak for everybody else, but it seemed like we would. There may be others who oppose the whole thing. I don't know that, but it seems to me we, we author, the motion is to have the superintendent get the policy in place, present it to us, and we'll accept it or not, or tweak it, whatever we want to do.
And I'm quite willing to tweak policies, as everybody knows.
Sure, yeah. And, and I see that as a step towards having this program where the comfort dog, I see no downside to it. Doesn't cost the taxpayers anything. The insurance is elsewhere if anything should go wrong. I, I see the liability, responsibility is not with, with taxpayers down in Irving, and I see benefits to students. I, again, I get to hear a downside to it, based on the experience that others have had. If it was the first time anybody proposed it, I'd be quite skeptical, but it's not, so. Yeah, this, this is to go with the policy, and if we have, find acceptable policy, I would hope we could agree to pursue the program.
I think that's, I think, I think that's the way to do it. I, I, I agree. And so, there's a motion and a second, and so I'm furthering the discussion by saying that I, I think that we should construct the policy, make sure it has all of the parts that we want it to have, make sure that it has a proper procedure, you know, all of the language regarding the insurance, what does that mean? How much is it for? All of that fleshed out. And then we can, we can come back and say, okay, once all of these, you know, the process has been complete, then, then we're ready to move forward on the actual getting an animal in the, in the school.
Yeah, reasonable process you've described, I think.
Okay.
So, timeline for, for me, I'm going to create a policy, get it vetted through Adam, and bring it, I mean, I can get this ready to bring to policy for the initial, for next month, because I heard you say you wanted to exped, you know, we can expediate it, which would at least start the process. Is that the direction from the committee?
So, again, not to get too far away from our motion, but I, I do think that the policy committee should have some structures to work with or look at. Like, I appreciate that you want to do a lot of that legwork, but I, I would want them to have examples and things so that they can make sure that they've added or modified it however they want to. But, so I think that's a good first step for creating the, the policy, is for you to take all sixty-eight of them and condense it down to a, a smaller pile that then, you know, the policy committee can finish doing their job of constructing the policy.
I believe I gave the policy committee, like, four different ones to look at, so you can start with those, too.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. I, again, I don't want to get too far away from this, the, the motion that's on the table. We can, I, I mean, I'm happy to continue to discuss this as well. I just want to make sure that we're not going too far down a way from, from this motion. Is there anything, is there any more discussion about the motion that's on the table, which is to begin the process of creating a policy for, for, for comfort animals?
Policy and procedure of how it would happen, essentially, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, I think that was, that's what we talked about, having kind of embedded in the policy. Is there any further discussion or questions about that? Okay, so we'll, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. And then, so yes, Shannon, if you could have that ready for our next meeting. And then, you know, at any time, we can call within forty-eight hours, another meeting. So, if we're feeling like we want to shorten this window and still have an opportunity to look at it several times, we can have some in-between meetings to address just this policy. Still giving us enough time to kind of think it through and digest it, but not make, not take full, four full school committee meetings to do it. So, just keep that in mind.
I, I would like to make a motion that we encourage Elizabeth to move forward on looking further into a dog and selecting a dog and, you know, getting ready for it. Obviously, without the policy, you know, we can't do it, and we can't tell you to do it or take on the expenses, but I just want to make a motion that encourages you to move, to, you know, you know, get yourself ready for it.
I would second that for discussion.
And I'm gonna say.
I don't know.
I, I disagree, and only because I don't want you going down a road if, for some reason, there's a problem and this doesn't pan out, or this doesn't pan out soon. I don't want you to feel like we've encouraged you to do something, and then it didn't pan out. So, I don't.
I don't think there will be a problem, but I can wait.
I, I, I don't feel right encouraging you to do something that we haven't officially voted for you to do. It's expensive, and I.
I think it makes sense.
I don't want, so, there's a motion and a second, so we will take the vote, but that, that's my opinion on it. And I will.
I just feel like the timeframe is long enough that I don't want to leave you hanging the whole time, and I would like you to feel encouraged that in all likelihood, you're probably, probably gonna end up doing this, or, you know, finding a way in which it will happen. You know, I, I mean, maybe what I'm saying is, I want to go on the record saying I'm in favor.
I think, I think that's, that's okay.
I mean, I've had the experience.
I don't feel comfortable having the committee say that.
And, you know, my experience and my research and what was brought to us, you know, is positive, and, and I want to go on the record and say that. And that's why I put that motion out in that way.
Okay, so there is a motion and a second. I don't want to, you know, just. Okay, so there is a motion and a second. I don't wanna, you know, discount that. Do you want to keep your motion, or do you want to?
My motion is to encourage Elizabeth to continue to feel supported in this search, yeah, in this endeavor. You know, it is not a commitment, it's an encouragement.
So, by way of discussion, if this isn't encouragement, we're not, we're not telling you, go, go get a dog. We're just-
I mean, if you want a dog, you, dogs are great, let me tell you.
But that's not something that we would vote on to, we don't have, we don't vote to encourage. I, 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 you know, I'm not not encouraging you, but that's just not our function, is to vote to encourage, so.
I appreciate it.
I just, procedurally, Mark, I, I, I'm gonna, you know, suggest that that's not a, a thing that we would do.
I guess, I, I see your point in the sense that it's not our job to muck about in program. We are not here to do program, and my motion sounds a little bit like I'm mucking about in program. And we're, our job is money and policy. And so, by starting the policy, the policy's started, you know, and we already know that money isn't gonna be the question, so maybe I just need to withdraw my motion since it's, it's mucking about in program, and that's not our lane. I'm sorry to say sometimes.
Okay, so, so would you like to withdraw your-
I'm gonna withdraw my motion.
Okay.
I will withdraw my second and, and, and point out that it's certainly up to the chair to keep us on the straight and narrow that if we're getting out of our lane a little bit, maybe the motion is occasionally out of order, is the way you'd say it, but it sounds cruel that way, but that's not, I think we, we expressed the encouragements because we can't, thank you.
All right, thank you for that. It's great to have a good, good discussion and dialogue about this. So, that finishes up the therapy dog discussion. Moving back to our agenda the way that it's written, so now would be the report from the Irving Teachers Association. No report?
No report.
Okay. Um, how about the pie?
Yep.
Report from pie, say it that way.
Um, so we met February third, um, at our last meeting. Since then, we have had a movie night, which was really successful. It was the first time we did a movie night, so we weren't sure how it was gonna go. And the weather was not necessarily in our favor with some freezing going on out in the parking lot. But thankful to the custodians here and the town for standing outside. We were able to keep the event on, and it was a great turnout. It actually felt like a really cozy, like at home, you know, it's cold and wet outside and they're all in here. All of the children were lined up in, like, the first row, and the parents were kind of in the back. And it was just a really great way to bring the community together, and it was really nice to see families being able to interact with each other. You know, it, it hasn't happened in a really long time. So, it was, it was just overall a really great event, and the families, we got a lot of great feedback. They enjoyed dinner and some really great snacks that were donated by everyone, so we appreciate that. And so, that is something that we will likely do again. We are in the process of planning spring events and another spring fundraiser, so, once I have that, I'll share that. We have been in communication with the front office to make sure things get in the newsletter, so I appreciate Karen and Pat for getting all my emails about things to add there. And then the Irving Apparel Store is still open. We kept it open year-round, and I think I mentioned this last month, but we were super excited that we were able to add colors to the different items. So, before you could only get it in Irving Elementary School school colors, but now you can pick all a range of different colors. And there are some new apparel options in there as well. So, definitely check out the store and get some Irving Elementary School apparel. And then, we are always looking for new parents to attend. You don't have to attend every meeting. And we do attend, we have our meeting virtual, so hopefully that makes it a little easier. Our next meeting is next Monday, March third, at seven PM on Google meets, and that will be posted everywhere as normal.
March what?
Uh, third, I think. Is that the right Monday? Yeah, the first Monday of the month, if there's not a holiday.
Okay, thank you. Um, budget and personnel committee report. Don't believe that they've, we've met, right? It's, the time blurs together. Um, joint supervisory committee meeting. Um, our next meeting is March seventeenth, right? Yep, St. Patrick's Day. All right, old business, we're up to surplus equipment update.
So, can I take a, a call? But we did just touch base about this, so they have-
Would you like us to skip it and come back when she can come in, or do you?
I'm not sure how long that's gonna take. It's a call from one of our folk, our parents.
Okay.
So, but we had just talked about this, so I feel like I can give a pretty accurate-
I didn't want you to have to-
We had just talked about this this afternoon. So, they are going through the process. They have sorted the plethora of things into what is broken and can be disposed of, what we don't own and is going to be disposed of. And it's been a little bit impeded because of the snow is impeding that process of accessing it. But the plan is that they will be presenting, and I, this is the process, they go to the selectmen to declare surplus equipment?
They, it comes to us first and then goes, and then goes to the select board.
She is thinking she will be able to start that process at the next meeting and be able to get it to the, to the selectmen.
Select board.
Yeah, select board, yes.
Okay, so, the, um, next meeting, so our March meeting?
Right now, I mean, unless the snow never melts and they can't access that.
Don't say those things.
But, you know, she thought they'd be a little further along with the vacation week, but then it was, you know, ice, ice everywhere, and so it really, the weather impeded the planned progress for that.
Okay, and is the, all things going correctly, the plan at the March meeting to give us both the list of broken disposable items and useful but don't need items?
Yes.
Okay. And Caitlin, in the, in your expenditure report, there was a expenditure for, um, storage units. Is that all of the units? Equipment lease, container rental, two hundred and seventy, is all of them together, or?
No, we only rent one unit.
And is that a monthly rent, two hundred and seventy?
That was, I think, two months together, 'cause sometimes we get them in a different, you know, till it lines up the warrants, so those two process in the same.
So, it's like a hundred and thirty-five a, a month?
Yeah.
And you're thinking that once we complete the process of disposing, getting, you know, however we disperse the equipment, that you'll be able to get-
One unit would be empty.
And it, it can be the rental unit?
Absolutely, yes. We are all looking forward to the day that that thing leaves.
Um, perfect, all right. New business, out-of-state field trips, discussion of possible vote. Do we have anything on this?
It was what Mark presented.
I know, but is there some sort of plan, what date, time, coming and going?
I don't have it. I don't know if that is something Beth, I'm going-
I think all we had to do was vote that they were allowed to leave the state.
Yeah.
Um, I think what we needed to vote was the plan for, not the internal plan, but like what the day was, when they were, when they were leaving, when they expected to come back. So, we knew when they were out of state, when they were coming back, that sort of thing. Like, I don't need, we don't need to know what's happening in between, but-
I'm not sure he was able to, and I could be wrong, move on that, because we hadn't had a vote yet.
Right, I think-
As far as being able to book what that timeframe was.
'Cause he said he wasn't gonna start the conversation with the, like, coordinator or anything until we approve that a field trip out of state could take place.
Okay, so then, I would like to phrase it as a field trip out of state could take place, but I, this board should be approving the, the day, like, the trip, so, so we know when it is, and that's what we're approving. As opposed to just a blanket, sure they could happen type thing. Does that make sense?
Why would we need to be involved in what day it is? I've, I've been here before.
I think because that's the, I think that was the purpose of the need to vote on it, was to give authority to allow the students to go out of state that day.
Is that a, that was a, a Department of Education rule?
I believe it is, right? Didn't it come from the Department of Ed?
And the question is, is it specific?
So, you have to vote that you allow out-of-state field, that you allow out-of-state field trips. So, you, once he, you make that decision, then he would have to present the, the details of that.
So, we vote again on the date?
So, it doesn't, so we only have to vote-
On the possibility.
That you're giving Mark permission to begin the process.
And then we vote again about the specifics?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, you wanna come up to the microphone and just kind of-
You didn't know you'd get to participate.
I didn't. So, we received, I'm a sixth grade mom, so we received information from Mr. Burnett yesterday that the trip plan is for Wednesday, May twenty-eighth. They'll be doing the Wax Museum and Wicked on Broadway, and that's about, that's, it's like, I know they're leaving early in the morning before school starts and getting home late, like, so we don't have exact times, but I do know that it is set tentatively, per his information, Wednesday, May twenty-eighth.
Okay.
And Beth may have some of that, but she had to take that.
So, here's what I would like to do. I'm fine with the vote, but then, Shannon, can you please look into the process of any out-of-state field trip and have a clear picture for us as to what that process is gonna look like? Can we see if we have a policy on that as well? No, I, I'm just, I was Googling it to try to quickly see what the reasoning, and then I see-
I think he brought it, yeah. I think he brought it because it has not happened since COVID, and so-
But the change probably happened a while ago, okay.
Yes. Yes, I can do that.
So, would you like a motion to-
Yes.
Approve the field trip out of state on May twenty-eighth, the, the date?
I think what we're approving is out-of-state field trips.
Okay.
And then, when we have a better, then we look at a more specific plan as to what time they're leaving and what time they're coming back. And that would be something that we address at a different time.
Plenty of time between now and May to accomplish that, so.
I J O A.
I think typically what happens is now he'll fill out the form, it'll get approved through Beth, and then it'll come to me, and then it will come to you.
That's my hope. That's, I'm hoping we have that process in place. So, do you wanna?
Yeah, I, I would, I, I just move that we approve the concept of, of having students go out of state on a, on a-
Great.
Can I make a comment?
What?
We have a policy that states all out-of-state or extended overnight trips and excursions, except those required for student participation in tournament competition, must have advanced approval of the school committee.
Yep. Yep, that's the next step. So, we're gonna approve out-of-state field trips right now. Then, when there's a clearer plan put through the process, then it'll come to us again for our approval per that policy.
Okay.
Okay? So, Dan, Dan made a motion to approve out-of-state field trips. We just need a second. Okay, Caitlin's seconding it. Um, any other discussion about that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mark, for looking that up.
Thank you for the information.
Yeah, thank you. Um, okay, so we have some more policies to talk about. Um, we have first read for several policies that we're looking to delete. And we have a second read and a first vote. So, first read for deletion, so we're looking to take these out of our, um, policy book, is CBC Superintendent Decision-Making Policy. And then we have Policy H Negotiations. So, this is a first read, which means it's our first time looking at these things, so they will come back up again.
I'll make a motion to move second both of them to second read.
Okay.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, Caitlin, was that both of them, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then, uh, second read, first vote. So, again, this is our first vote, so we do still have another opportunity if we find something that we wanna change on EFDD Local Meal Charge Administrative Policy. So, we'll need a motion and a second, because again, this is our first vote on this, to vote to accept.
I'll make a motion, oh, sorry, I'll make a motion to move it to second vote.
Second.
All right, any further discussion about this? No? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, so these will all come back to us. At this time, we're gonna go into executive session, so we're going to end our public session, move into executive session in accordance with Open Meeting Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one-A. Um, we're gonna move to go, move to go into executive session to discuss strategies with respect to collective bargaining. We will not come back to open session. So, for all of you in the audience, thank you for staying.
Are you inviting anyone?
Oh, I'm sorry, I just wanna say before we go that our next meeting is on March eighteenth. Um, policy is at six-thirty, regular school committee meeting is at seven, sorry.
Could I say one thing before we go into executive session?
Oh, sure.
Is Otis still over there somewhere?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Are, are these new cameras, microphones and stuff? Okay, thank you. I wanna thank Otis and Brian for working to get that together and let everyone know I neglected to go to the senior center today to get the curt, the curtains. But, but I assume we'll have our own coming with, with a banner that says Irving School Committee.
Excellent. Thank you so much for continuing to work on that.
Thank you.
All right, so we need to end, do a roll call vote in, uh, to move out of open and into executive. So, uh, we'll make a motion, sorry, and then we'll roll call vote. Lost track of where I was. So, make a motion, I've made a motion to go into executive session. I need a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you. And then, all in favor, so Bailey, aye?
Emma, Emma, aye.
Maybe a little aye?
Watchley, aye.
Jumping the gun. Thank you.
I heard it in my head already.
Okay, we're journeying the meeting.